It is five o'clock and I would like to call the September twenty eighth, um, school board meeting to order. Um, this evening, Dr. Lindeman is out ill and Shan Lee, our board president, is out ill and Stacy is out ill. So we have a little bit of short staff. We're small but mighty today. So, um, I would just ask all of you, join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Now if you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And India, would you mind reading the mission statement for us tonight?
Not at all. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing their career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, India, on that short notice. And, um, tonight we do have our board secretary Pam Arndorfer and, um, checking to see if there was any information submitted from individuals, um, for the meeting tonight.
Um, I did receive one letter which I forwarded to the board earlier today. It was in regards to a personnel, um, issue. So we will not read that publicly, um, but that was sent out to the board. That is the only thing that I received.
Thank you. And everybody got that correct? Ask her, Lyle. Perfect. Thank you, Pam. Now we'll move on to item A on our agenda, which is the International Baccalaureate and Advanced Programming Update. And we have our director Sharice Ortman here to give us an update.
Hello. I brought gifts. I didn't know if, um, I was gonna send it as an attachment, but this is the elementary and middle school gifted services. And a lot of people and some of you who are new, or maybe if you're not new, don't realize like all the different supports that those ELP teachers, which is small but mighty, there's only thirteen ELP teachers in the entire district. And they do a tremendous amount of work to maintain rigor for all kids. And also they are the roster teachers for twice exceptional programming. So I thought you might want those. I'm gonna keep it brief, which is not typical, because I want you to be able to ask questions. But I do wanna highlight, there have been some big wins for IB and the advanced program in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. You were given an advanced program highlight as well as equity, and I think that's also important for us to talk about if you have additional questions. And, um, a video. So typically we have students here and they're the ones that are telling you about their journey and why IB or why AP and how advanced programs have supported their pursuits. But due to COVID, we're not having students in the building at this time. So on the IB diploma program, I really wanna highlight that we received IB world status. This is a huge achievement. It happens after five years of maintaining a world standard. So I need to give a big kudos to my building coordinator, Ellen Shea, who's not here tonight. But she worked for a year on updating the application to become IB world status at both East and West. We came up with an idea talking with both Joe and Andy at East and West High School that we're gonna do this really modern plaque. So I'll get with Tara to make sure we make a big deal about that. Because being an IB world school, we are now the only IB world diploma program in the whole state. You may or may not know that Des Moines changed their program. Um, IB wasn't working well at their career center. And so they have it at East, their East High Campus, and they started it again. So you have to go through a full five-year review to be IB world status. So that's a big, big win for our district. Also, you can see the accolades. The IB world students end up, over the last five years, they've been valedictorian, salutatorian, KWWL best of class, they've been the governor's choice award recipients, and Des Moines register student of the year. All of them receive the honors diploma. This year's ACT average was actually slightly lower. We typically average at twenty seven point two. This year it was twenty five point six, which, just to put that in perspective, that's about the eightieth percentile in the nation of over two million kids who take the ACT. Uh, their GPA average is three point nine six. This was last year's graduating cohort. And the college graduation rate of the first cohort was ninety-one percent finished a four-year in four years or less. And that's huge. IB world averages about eighty-nine of the IB diploma graduates finished college in four years or less, and we were above the world standard on that. So that's a big win. And I'm gonna follow up with all of you on how many of those students who not only finished in four years or less, but are now in grad school or law school. Um, we have the University of Iowa president currently is a West High IB diploma graduate. So big accolades. And also that push for the GPA for more premier colleges of kids that graduate from the Waterloo Schools. So typically if, um, you're not as familiar with ACT, we look at more thirty-three for a composite. And we do have a couple of IB students who had a thirty-three on their ACT last year. Uh, you can see there now, it's a small and mighty group, last year's cohort of, um, let me see here. I might have to get my readers out now. Um, the cohort ended up with two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty dollars in sc- academic scholarships. In that cost is three full tuitions to Iowa State and one full tuition to Iowa. And again, that's a small and mighty group. I believe, let me look down here, full DP kids. That was, let me see, is it nineteen or sixteen? Fifteen. So out of fifteen kids who stay with the full diploma, meaning they take every single class IB, they write an extended essay, which is similar to research that you would conduct in grad school, and they finish CAS, Creativity Activity and Service, which is a hundred service hours. So those fifteen full diploma students who maintain all courses and those core, you can see what they're yielding there for their return. Um, if you look at the amount of college transfer, that's kids on, in May exams after the two-year program. It's a seven-point scale, similar to AP is a five-point scale. So of last year's cohort in the IB program, fours or higher uh, end up yielding about ninety thousand dollars in college transfer credits. If you base it on U of I, which most of our kids do go to the state schools, to the regions, is about eleven hundred dollars per three-hour credit. Um, also I wanted to highlight, you can see what our numbers are there. And I wanted to highlight that we just launched the biliteracy seal, which puts students at a translator level for the state of Iowa. It yields a world language credit at universities and also puts people into the workforce with having that seal who can be considered translators out of high school. Eighty percent of the IB diploma world language kids receive that biliteracy seal. In the AP Advanced Program, you can see those numbers there in a few highlights. This is a big, big win. All thirteen of our AP classes offered at both East and West High School increased their average. So again, in the world of advanced placement, AP, a three, four, or five yields college credit. And we, for the first time, we were forty-one percent of the exams yielded a three or higher, which is a big deal. That's district-wide. Very proud of that. First time since I've been in my position of seven years. And you can start to see kids taking more pre-IB classes. Right now we have about six hundred and ninety-four kids taking pre-IB. It's open to everybody. Pre-IB just means advanced, whether you go into IB, AP, or you take a Hawkeye concurrent, or you take Hawkeye out at the Career Center. So that's a big, that's a big win, and you can start to see that pathway is building.
What percent was last year? What percent was three-year higher?
For the threes or higher?
Yeah.
We were under thirty.
Okay.
Yeah, as a district. We didn't quite hit that thirty mark last year. We were close.
Thank you.
But I'll get you those exact numbers, Lyle.
No, that's, that's good enough.
Okay.
Well, and then number of students I'd like to, you know, that was taking the exams.
Oh, right. And I do have, so AP non-duplicated numbers, two hundred and twenty last year. We had two hundred and fifty-six exams, but a handful of those are duplicates. And then the concurrent liberal arts, I'm not here to present about the Career Center. That's, um, Jeff Frost is the director of the Career Center. But we do have sixty-three concurrent classes, either Hawkeye, Kirkwood, or DMAC. And most of those are located at the Waterloo Career Center. But I oversee the liberal arts one, and that's because I've been building up, of course, post-secondary, but I tend to build up four-year beyond. And so I look at a lot of the liberal arts that are linked to the ACT. So that's sort of a, a point I didn't bring out, but the ACT average, um, the IB diploma subgroup's the highest ACT average in the district right now. Last year's, um, average was twenty point three. And the reason I highlight that is because all of the IB liberal arts courses, all the AP liberal arts courses align to the ACT outcomes for English, math, science, and social studies. So I encourage kids that if you're really looking at increasing ACT, looking at a liberal arts pathway, then you probably wanna populate courses that are going to yield a higher return for when you start a four-year with the liberal arts. So sometimes we look at breadth of choice and sometimes we look at depth of choice.
Could you define the seated? How does that work? Number seated and duplicates?
Oh, sure. So for this year, at East High School, there's four AP classes. We have a hundred and two seated. Those are duplicates, so I'll get the exact number. I think we're about eighty. And at West High School, we have nine AP classes with two hundred and ninety-two seated, meaning there's two hundred and ninety-two kids taking AP classes, but some are duplicated. So one kid might take two, three, or four AP classes. And the non-duplicated, I think it's about, maybe at about two-thirty at West, but I'll get you those numbers.
So how many classes are at East and West again?
Four at East High School and nine AP classes at West High School. And then of the concurrent classes, highlight, East High has six concurrent classes that are liberal arts. And so when I say that, those are uh, Western Civ one, two, three, Composition one and two, Fundamentals of Oral Communication. And those were deliberately created so they transfer to our regions as a liberal arts credit. So I wanted students to be able to build their pathway and maybe have most of their ninth, uh, their freshman year of college already satisfied. So those courses all transfer to Iowa, Iowa State, and UNI, and of course to Hawkeye.
Dude, when they're taking, when they're taking a class virtually from like Hawkeye, like toward them, does that count into your numbers as well?
It does.
Okay, so you get to pull those out even if you're not in the building classes?
Yep. Because we're still paying for them. So I'll be here for the Hawkeye contract agreement if you wanna pull it and talk about it. But, um, any of the courses that are on that agreed-upon list, and I think there's like, we might be at sixty, fifty-two. And then there's eleven additional like DMAC and Kirkwood, but the contract that you're gonna look at today from Hawkeye, all those fifty-two concurrent classes, not only do we pay for, we pay for non-public kids. It's part of our agreement. And then we get supplemental waiting regardless of the location they take it at. If they take it with us at East or West, and that's why I built it up, we pay twenty percent. I'm gonna be very open with that. If we take it at an alternate location or online, we pay a hundred percent. Now we get a supplemental rate, waiting return on that, but that's why we cover the cost of books if kids take it at Hawkeye, 'cause it's our teachers teaching it, who have been trained to teach the concurrent classes and have the right amount of, um, education to teach those courses.
So most students just take one AP class?
Uh, no, they usually, you can have like one, kids taking one or two or three classes. Yeah.
Cause if the, you, I think you gave the example of West High, nine classes, two ninety-two seated. If there's only, you know, roughly two hundred and thirty non-duplicated, that means not very many are taking more than one.
They do in, in various years. So maybe one year they're taking one or two, but then the next year they'll take one, or the next year. When we built up the pre-IB pathway, if you want me to look at like the total of all kids over time, I, you know, I probably could pull the last five years. What we started to do, which has really increased, is when we offered Advanced English nine in eighth grade as a pre-IB class, then they took pre-IB English ten in ninth grade. So we have a lot of tenth graders taking AP Lang. I think our numbers right now are like a hundred and twenty-eight, which is awesome.
That's what Tor, my, my daughter did, AP, one AP English is as a sophomore and one is a junior. So she had it spread out.
Yep.
And then she has, and she has free this year.
Yep.
So she's taking free at the same time this year, free APs this semester, so.
So does our, is our, uh, scheduling system limiting in some way?
Um, here's what would limit. What I try not to do is not, first of all, I don't want comparable courses, especially if they're college courses. So we try to make them as non-comparable as we can. Um, the other thing we try to do is we try to make sure that if a student wants to take like an IB Biology, which is a two-year course, but maybe they wanna take AP Chem, we try not to have them at the same time. We really work at scheduling so that they don't overlap, 'cause some kids might wanna double up in sciences, but they might not wanna take, um, two full IB sciences. They might wanna take the IB science that is more of their focus area, 'cause that's deeper and more rigorous, but they might wanna take another AP science class. Now.
So these courses are semester courses, not?
No, they're year.
They're year, okay.
IB is two years. AP is one year. Concurrent is one semester. So all the Hawkeye classes that you see down there, um, and I put the sixty-three concurrent, but I just showed the liberal arts courses, not the ones out at the Career Center. So the six classes with eighty-one seated, and West High has seven classes with three hundred and seventy-eight seated. I'll get you the non-duplicates on those. But for those classes, um, hold on, non-duplicated. Those we try to make sure that they, that they're taken at another time so kids can do sort of a bingo card of, I wanna take this AP class, but I wanna take this semester concurrent class. And they really look at what are your pathway pursuits? And then this doesn't include the Waterloo Career Center, so Jeff is going to share when we meet as a team to look over the program of studies. The barrier, to be honest with you, was the three block. Because that, that might be during an AP and IB or a concurrent liberal arts course back at their high school. So by Jeff switching the three to a four block, it reduces the amount of time so that we can try to fit in more of those college classes back at their, at their home school. And then still be able to take Career Center courses.
That'd be good, 'cause that's my, particularly on the science engineering pathways, that's my concern, just looking ahead with one of mine is that, you know, you gotta take so much early just to clear out space, be able to go there, but still have time to take your AP Physics or your AP Chem or whatever else, you know, because you just can't get, and then it's a hard choice. It's like, do I go do the hands-on stuff, or do I get the AP stuff I need that helped me successful in core classes later on? And it's, and I, I see a good argument for both. You know, you need, but you need those AP, you need those advanced classes, especially if I could sit in the, the science engineering round. But you also need those hands-on things, those things that will make you a better.
Well, and in the IB sciences that are two years, that's the other thing that makes them more rigorous. They have by your senior year, because IB is only for eleventh and twelfth graders. So by your senior year, you're basically doing labs every day. So what makes it more com- complex is the autonomy of those students, like they have to be in control of their own learning, and they're doing labs all the time, not just sit and get. So there are some other kinds of active engagement. I would say it's very cognitively engaging because there's a ton of discourse, so they do a ton of Socratic. There's a lot of thinking, there's a lot of speaking, and there's a lot of writing in IB. And it's typically going to be research-level writing where you defend an argument. And that's why there's a really beautiful alignment with the ACT, because argumentative writing is one of the pieces of ACT outcomes. And the critical thinking.
I have a quick question about, um, though this is offered for Waterloo Schools, have any other districts been interested in trying to bring their students into this IB world?
Oh, the IB diploma program?
Yes.
We've had Columbus kids, and we did have Cedar Falls, we had one Cedar Falls student our first year. Um, but mostly Columbus, but a lot of the kids now, if they're gonna come to us from Columbus, they're gonna come to us in ninth grade because they wanna take the pre-IB classes. And so they've been with us throughout the four years of high school. So they might've left middle school and, um, and come to West or East High School for that. This year we have, there were probably four kids who did that, their ninth-grade year, who are now eleventh graders doing IB.
Okay, so they do have an option?
Yes.
Great.
And, and the reason why, India, is because, uh, there's not any other place for that program. So you can have that, like that agreement to either come to our building and take it, or you can actually transfer and be at one of our high schools and then be on the path to take the diploma program.
So when you say classes, you mean biology versus chemistry, or do you mean sections of classes?
No, the actual class. Biology, chemistry, Lang and Lit, uh, world language courses.
Okay, so some of them have more than one section?
Yes. And so, well, of AP, yes, we have more than one section at both, at West High and Concurrent. I think I have three concurrent, like Western Civ, and three Comp One sections at West and one or two at East. I'll have to double check. So we have more than one section of some of those courses. Now, the IB diploma program, because it's smaller, and we're still building capacity, as you know, and this year was a little difficult with COVID. We had kids over the summer, especially our junior cohort, that said, if we're gonna be going back and forth, IB does not translate to an online program. We don't, it's not set up that way. It's a heavy dose of discourse. It's a heavy dose of kids doing their own research in every subject. And so we had a lot of kids who said, I don't know what it's gonna look like next year, and I don't wanna have to invest in something. And then like the East program in Des Moines, they actually stopped their IB this year because of going online. You cannot do IB online. That's not the program. And so we did lose, so we had some attrition this year, more than we have in the past, and I get that. I get that. And, um, our teachers have been great, and we're learning how to live with instead of, you know, being afraid of. So I've seen a lot more kids feel better, so we hope to rebuild that capacity next year and get those numbers back up. 'Cause right now we're at about nine to fifteen in a cohort.
So with some scheduling, I don't know what we've done in the past or certain regulation. Have we ever looked at actually listing out the times, like periods that we're planning for classes in, in our scheduling to help kids pick? I mean, I could do, in colleges, you'll see, if you're gonna sign up for, you know, uh, Chemistry one oh five, you know, you got Section one, Section two, Section three, at what periods to help? Because I think that's been one of my challenges, not, not have visibility to it. I couldn't understand the challenges of why we couldn't get from, get the schedule to work. But now once I saw the time slots, I could start, you know, piecing together a little bit better. Okay, now I understand what's going on here. But, you know, it was, for, for us, it was a little frustrating until we figured out what the matrix of classes looked like on why we couldn't get stuff to fit, you know?
Right.
And other than saying, well, we can't, it, it had a conflict. Well, what's the conflict? What's, what, what's, what's, you know, this visibility to see what's going on? And then it became a lot more apparent, at least on what decisions had to be made, what you could do, and then what you may, you know, have to make a decision to give up something, just 'cause we could see that. And as I saw that, you know, my question's not, you know, kind of drifted from my oldest to my, you know, a little more to my youngest. Like, okay, how, I seen how this works a little more even, how can, what are the, what else does he need to take? 'Cause I know what he's, he'll have more challenges than this one in scheduling. So I, I just don't know when we do our, our catalogs, if we have better consider, like,
Right. Yep, we do.
If we're, if we're gonna offer, or offer it later on, so we can get some idea of, you know, well, they only, typically only offer one section.
Right. So, and you're right, Jesse, you're right. So, um, when I come back on October twelfth, and when we meet October fifth to look at the whole program of studies, that document is rolled out a lot sooner than it had been in the past. So we'll start registering kids. We have Hawkeye coming to register East, West, and Expo kids and have a date out at the Career Center already the first week in November. And I'll have a college course overview this year. It's gonna be via Zoom in, um, the third week in October. And the counselors are gonna start to meet with kids already in November at the high schools. And then in December, we meet with the middle school kids to do their four-year plan. But you're absolutely right. There's so many different moving parts where we hope to solidify those numbers as soon as possible so we can get the FTE to know how many seats there will be, how many kids in those classes, to figure out when we can offer those sections. I sit down with Steve Winters and Josh Peyton at East and West High School who do the scheduling. We sit down every spring to look at IB and AP, make sure they don't overlap, make sure we have the right number of sections. But we have competing pathways. If a kid's gonna go out to the Career Center for three, a block of three periods, we're now reducing it instead of three blocks to four blocks over a shorter, sorry, shorter period of time. That should start to help, but those numbers have gone up so quickly, and kids during COVID time, we're switching schedules up into a week and a half ago.
Yeah.
So there's all these other, and we're trying to get tighter and better, and I think with every year, exactly what you're saying, Jesse, we're getting smarter as a Ed Services team and looking at schedules collectively.
And, you know, I think it's, and I think it's a key thing even in, you know, and this is not, you know, less for year-round, but just, you know, is, is, you know, more counselor availability during the summer. We, I mean, you know, when families, I think, need that access to, you know, where it's, the schedule thing is here, as you learn stuff, you know, it could be a decision where, you know, I, oh, I went and visited college, I need this, but I don't have it in my schedule. I need to make some changes, you know, or,
Right.
you know, and be able to make some adjustments, especially the last two years over summer, to help kinda navigate that system. And even be able to access stuff for early, you know, where it's early scholarships, early deadlines, you know, it's like, needing transcripts, different things. I mean, I just think there's a, we, we lose a chunk of time during the summer that, you know, we could probably be, you know, we could, in my mind, you always have a counselor there almost, you know, three hundred days a year versus whatever the one-eighty, whatever the contract is, you know? And that's really not really necessarily your item, but just, you know, things I know, it's like, you know, at summertime, it's like, you know, families do need information to make decisions there, you know?
Well, and you're absolutely right, and you're very thoughtful in the way you look at your children's pathways. And now we've gone from, when I started in this position seven years ago, I think we had nineteen college classes. We're over a hundred. We're over a hundred different kinds of college courses that either lead to post-secondary, four-year, four-year beyond. That's a huge, that's a, that's a, something to be incredibly proud of in our district. And even when I'm out and about, people still don't know that. They don't know how much opportunity we have. So I think all of you as board members, because it's a big deal. And when you finally sit down and talk to someone, they're sort of blown away by all the opportunities that their children have when they're in Waterloo. Open access opportunity, by the way.
Sharice, I believe you answered this question, but I wanna make sure I got it correct.
Sure, ask her.
So back to India's question. So either currently or in the past, we've had students from other districts or other schools participate in the IB program?
Yes.
How does that work? And this is without transferring as a freshman, as you, as you explained, coming in after eighth grade. So they're actually in different buildings, and then they come participate. How does that work financially?
Well, they end up coming to us as an eleventh or twelfth grader, so they would be our enrolled student.
So they are?
So they leave. To do, if you're, if you're going to do the full IB diploma program, every class but one is an IB class. And the core outcomes of writing your own essay and then, um, engaging in a hundred hours of service learning over the two years, you wouldn't be back and forth. Yeah. Now, we have a lot of kids who do come back and forth, and they take an AP class. I haven't had any kids take one IB singleton from non-publics or from Cedar Falls. If they're gonna come, they're coming for the whole diploma program.
When you say come back and forth, explain that a little bit.
So I have a significant number of students who, let's say Columbus students, which we cover the cost of non-public, and we can sit down and have a session outside of this tonight and talk more about that. So they might take five, um, classes at Columbus, and then they might go to West High and take two AP classes or an AP and a concurrent, like, Composition one. And then they might go out to the Career Center and take courses out there, but then they're back at their home school. So we do cover the cost, but we do get the per pupil for the amount of time they're at our building.
And that's no different from the agreements with the Career Center. We do get for sharing, you know, the same type, it's all.
That's, that's what I thought. I wanted to make sure.
It's different. The twenty-eight E is different because we, we came with an agreement of like four hundred and fifty dollars that we get back from them. But the non-public kids who take all of our concurrent classes, whether they're at the high schools or out the Career Center, we actually enroll them for the per pupil amount that we get for that percentage of time that they're at our building.
So it would probably be higher than the four fifty?
Right. Yes. Yes.
Similar, similar then, but not, not quite the same.
Right. And then, I mean, I just, I wanted to give a nod out. My ELP teachers work tirelessly. There's only thirteen of them. And you can see sort of the equity comes out of having, we have seven hundred and fifty-two identified kids as gifted, gifted or ELP in our district, and they also oversee the twice exceptional program. And you can see we had a big win with training of over two hundred and forty teachers in both rigor outcomes and twice exceptional. So that's a big deal too. We're proud of it.
Sharice, I just wondered when you had spoke of the IB world status, what a significant thing that was. What does that get you, or what, what does it mean to have IB world status?
So we go on a formal registry of IB world schools all over the world. And I can get you the numbers on how many there are, but I always say, it's such a cool thing if you graduate as an IB diploma student, 'cause you're less than one percent. because you're less than one percent of the kids in the world to obtain that. It's, it's just, I think, such an honor that both East and West met our outcomes. And they really met the outcomes. It wasn't just, we were marked off of things that we weren't doing. We were really showing that world's level of what the outcomes are and the rigor of IB is. And I'm going to give that all to those teachers who have been teaching the IB diploma program. And many of them teach pre-IB classes and AP classes, and even in their AP classes, the scores have gone up. So you run it at a highest world standard of rigor, everything else comes up.
Right.
Really proud of them.
Right, that's awesome. So I just want, and then before you gave us like, I'm kind of just like a simple numbers person. So like, what's the enrollment in IB at each of our schools for the last four years? Do you have that?
I can get it for you. I have, like, going back the last three years, we're, we're slightly lower again, but I had a lot of kids say, I don't want to invest in IB not knowing what COVID's going to bring. And if we go remote, that's not what I signed up for. I want discussion. I want to be involved in my own research and I don't want it to go online because you can't really meet that same standard. So this year we did drop, we did have some attrition from our DP cohort with, the senior cohort, I know, um, we lost probably ten kids over the summer from juniors to seniors because of that, and I understand it. But in the past, okay, so this year, 2020, 2021, we have forty-two full IBDP kids who are taking all IB classes and then the core. And then we have thirty more who are certificate kids, meaning they're taking one or more IB classes. So seventy-two total kids. Last year. Yeah, that's, oh, I can break it out from East and West for you. I'll send it to you. That's district. And then last year, let's see, we had forty-five full diploma kids, but we had fifty taking individual classes or what we call certificate kids. So that was slightly higher at ninety-five. And then the year before that, we had fifty-seven full diploma kids and only ten certificate kids. So sixty-seven. So slightly lower, but again, it doesn't surprise me with these interesting times and kids uncertain about, why would I spend all that time? And then if it gets pulled from under me, we can't do the online model. Yep.
Hopefully five years from now, we just have an asterisk next this year in our numbers, you know.
Yeah, definitely. I'll do that. And I'll get all those for you. I'll send them to you.
On the equity side?
Yes.
The African-American and males are both pretty grossly underrepresented. Why is that and what are we doing to, to improve that?
And I will tell you, not only African-American and males, I will tell you African-American males and Hispanic males have been traditionally a slower growing population of the college courses. Um, but what we're doing, for me on my end, I will tell you equity training with our ELP teachers. So going back and even identifying gifts and talents in diverse population. Um, they go into the rooms more and provide more critical thinking strategies for all kids. Um, we've added open access to every single high school class. Before COVID, I would go to a lot of the churches and go to community members and talk to them about open access for all kids. Now, I will say, if you look at, so when you're reading this, you probably figured it out, but that first column on your equity sheet is the percentage of each subgroup that we have in the high schools as a district. So like, if you look at number one, race, ethnicity, Hispanic, we have eleven point seven percent of our kids are Hispanic. And then within each of those areas, Concurrent, which, by the way, those Concurrent numbers do include the Career Center. So I pulled all Concurrent, not just the liberal arts ones. AP and then IB. Hispanic females is the fastest growing group at, in the IB diploma program in the last two years. And then as you continue to look down and look across, you can see, so you're right. Um, black or African-American, you can see, I think it's four when you, when you have the race, ethnicity on tableau. You can see as a high school enrollment, thirty percent, and you can see within each of those areas that it's below. So part of it is open access and conversations and having our African-American kids and Hispanic kids talking to their peers. They need to tell the story. Uh, you know, I can go into every classroom and I can throw up IB videos and tell people it's for them, but it has to happen early in elementary school. Um, we have to, you know, start building those relationships of what is critical thinking. And my ELP teachers have been amazing. We have culturally fair assessments that we use now. And we have affective attributes, so we have a ton of talent development kids. And that's where you'll see an increase, that those numbers actually look like our district. So maintaining those pathways and making that open access in high school and not based on you're either in ELP or you're in talent development, none of that matters. It's just that pathway of encouragement, having our teachers create better relationships with our kids and saying, you know, this is a place for you.
So, quick question. So you said you and the teachers. So where's the role of the counselor? Do they not have a role in this?
Oh, counselors, yes, yes. But, but counselors have relationships and they also, we talk about equity, we talk about scheduling. But what I've found is most of the kids are encouraged to take a pathway because somebody they have a relationship with encourages them. So that might not be the counselor.
Correct.
It might be the classroom teacher. So for all my teachers who teach pre-IB or Concurrent or AP or IB, we always talk about, how are you building capacity so our programs look like Waterloo schools?
And I only say that because parents don't usually equate that. They're always equated to a counselor. They're, so they don't always say, are you talking to your teacher about your schedule? Are you talking to your counselor is usually what they always assume. So that's why I'm just throwing, like, the encouragement is also coming from the all-around, not just the counselors, but teachers and, you know, other students, things of that nature.
I will share with you, though, what you would be proud of is the pre-IB, which are eighth, ninth and tenth grade classes, which are the advanced. That does look like the numbers in our district, so I'm going to share that with you. I had looked at them the other day and I didn't include it in this report. But that's the beginning stages of saying, take an advanced class. You're highly capable. You do belong in this class. And it does look more like you than it did six years ago.
And I would go, I would go a step farther. As a parent, and I'm glad you mentioned that, and the peers, peer relationship is important. Uh, but as a parent of a African-American young man who's taken his first AP class this semester, um, I would say, get that information out to the parents as well.
Yeah.
Uh, parents still have, um, a lot of connection, their relationships with other parents to help them understand the process of AP and, and the IB programs. And I understand, I mean, because as a child, you don't always have those educational conversations with your peers.
Yep.
Uh, but as an adult, um, one parent to another parent, or, or if you're a mentor like myself, you can have those conversations with those young people about, um, the challenges or, or the benefits of taking those classes, so.
Right.
Um, and I know in my situation, me and my son didn't even have the conversation about taking AP class. And I reached out to a few more parents and I'm like, have you had conversations with counselors?
Mm-hmm.
Um, at any point about these AP classes? Or, or is that a parent's job to help steer their child? Or is that just a conversation between counselors or teachers and the students? Um, so I think engaging the parents a little bit more to get that information out will be helpful and beneficial.
So October twenty-eighth, that's our big parent night, goes out to every single eighth, ninth and tenth grade parent. And it's talking all about the college options for every single kid. So you heard it here, Ed Connect calls will go out and we're, we're going to do two Zooms that night. And then I'll, I'll do it again just ahead of probably November, uh, registering. So we try, you know, I think we've, we, as we grow, we've tried to push more and more out and the counselors are lovely, lovely humans, but they're not the only ones that impact pathways, you know. I, I think it's all of us, everybody.
You know, and I think.
And you have to, you have to know about it.
You do.
To push it.
You do.
Well, I think there's a couple of important things there. And one, I think, is, and, you know, as a parent, I've learned it more as too. And I, I'll reflect a little bit back on my, to, to your example in a minute. You know, is, you know, engaging the, where's counselors and engaging parents more at the middle school level to let them know, know this ahead of time, because so often, like you say, they don't get the information until, you know, well, I didn't take this class until I'm a junior now or sophomore. And maybe if I knew about something more about this when I was starting seventh grade, even as a parent, you know, parent of, you know, a middle school kid that's heading that direction, kind of can start to kind of plot a future. So I think even the importance of a counselor is at the middle school level to help and teachers to do that. And, and to your, Aster, to your point, I can remember, you know, I had the opportunity when I was in high school and not, not here, but, you know, I, I took, I think, two or three AP classes. But, you know, I can tell you, my parents knew nothing about them. My grandmother that raised me knew nothing what AP class was. I don't, you know, we had much, you know, she hadn't made free school herself, you know. But me learning about them didn't come from parents. There's also people that are talking to me about that to get that point to. I think it probably about, said of our students still today is, you know, maybe the parents don't know what they are, but also help the students understand what those pathways, and that may be, you know, another person in their, like you said, or is a teacher, or is that a counselor, or whoever, a coach or whatever, to help, you know, mentor the students along these, these pathways. Because you're right, it, it not, it's no fair looking back, you know, it's not fun looking back thinking, boy, if I'd known this, I could have done something different. And I'd rather know, I'd rather know that our kids have the full opportunity laid in front of them. I don't care how much time we got to give it to them and think, maybe we got one more if we shared a little bit more. It may.
Right.
Be a little more bothersome to some family because they're hearing this again, but for the parents, maybe somebody didn't hear or the student themselves who didn't hear it, they get that one more opportunity. That could be pivotal later on in their lives, so.
Well, being in this role, I know about the programs.
Yeah.
You share that information, Aster.
Right, right.
Share it. Speak it loud. We also go in.
Even if we don't know if they're interested or not, you know, talk to them about it. But I know the, the classes are, for my son, for instance, um, when we go through his class schedule, he didn't have AP. He didn't express an interest in wanting to take AP classes. Um, so his schedule was already made and then when school started this year, he went and got a schedule change.
Right.
And added that, which I thought was awesome. Um, so that's what I was trying to.
Yep.
Explain, but definitely.
And we do the college course overview, like the parent night that's coming up on the twenty-eighth. We do it for all seventh and eighth graders, so we go into the middle schools with my IB and AP coordinators and the eighth grade counselors and my AP and IB counselor from the high schools. So we go into all four feeder schools and we do an overview with all seventh and eighth graders and really encourage those counselors to talk to students about, take one pre-IB class, take one advanced course. You're going to realize it is a place for you. Yeah.
Have we ever considered doing like, even like, uh, something like where we talk to some of our former students that come from these programs? You know, we have, you know, like you said, a lot of cohorts out there and what they achieved, you know. You know, like anything else, sometimes it's a little bit different, maybe to hear some, to a young person who went through that.
Yep.
You know, a way to, to help connect to the kids a little bit differently, maybe than, you know.
Yeah. So every spring but sans COVID, um, we have the graduates come back and they meet with, um, like ninth and tenth grade kids and talk about the program from their perspective and how college was actually easier than high school. And, um, then we have the high school kids who are in IB and AP classes who look like our community go with me to the middle schools. So there are things out there happening, but it takes all of us, all of you, all the people you talk to, tonight's meeting, share everything and all the opportunities we have.
And I just was wondering with the lack of Hispanic students, I mean, do we give anything in Spanish to, you know, parents of middle school kids or provide stuff in Spanish so that the parents understand and.
And all the languages.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay.
So if I understand it correctly, on the Concurrent courses, at least those at the WCC, students can do both A and B. Is that not, they don't have that opportunity on the liberal arts Concurrent or AP or IB?
I'm sorry, Lyle, could you say that again? So kids who take Concurrent classes at the Career Center. Yes, they can also take Concurrent classes at the high schools, AP classes or IB.
No, that's not my, my question is, they can do both Schedule A and Schedule B. In other words, they can go to school every day if they want to.
Oh, oh, you're talking about during COVID times?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, I'm not sure how they set that up. I think they were allowing kids to go every day at the Career Center, but I'm not sure.
So.
Stephanie saying yes?
Yes.
Yes, they can.
So why wouldn't we do the same thing with IB to get away from the problem that you were describing and the same with AP for that matter?
Well, um, I think when the hybrid plan went, um, it's sort of tricky. You know, the Career Center is off by itself. But if you have some kids going every day and you're trying to reduce the size, but then you have some kids going every other day. I think it was a matter of sort of scheduling when the idea of it was to reduce size. And a lot of those AP classes, you know, AP classes can get up to thirty kids in them. So part of it was the argument of reducing the class size. Now, what I'll tell you, Lyle, is kids way before we even said we were going to do AB as our Return to Learn Plan, they were already last spring as juniors deciding, I don't want to go through this again. This year's been strange. I don't want to risk it if there's no widespread vaccine. I don't want to invest that much, and so I'm not going to continue with the full IB program. So they, a lot of the kids who made up their mind was way before we decided to do an alternate plan. They were afraid that we'd go back to what we did in the spring. And you really cannot meet the outcomes of IB on that, what we called remote learning model of last spring. So that, the AB, AB thing isn't what caused kids to drop out. It was kids last spring anticipating that next year wasn't going to be like what they had anticipated it would be.
But if you, do you think if they had the option of taking classes or, or putting that program at the Career Center where they could go every day, do you think the numbers would have went up?
No, it wouldn't have mattered. Kids that we lost through attrition because of COVID, they made that decision back in May. It was really hard to maintain the standards of IB remotely.
Well, I imagine, I don't know what.
Yeah.
It was, it just turns it off. If they, if they knew they had opportunity to be in class every day.
Uh-huh.
Um, maybe house somewhere else, uh, in a, you know, different environment, WCC, if they're going every day. Do you think the numbers would have went up at that time?
Uh, actually, actually, the kids who are in the full IB diploma program, who are alternating every other day, even though it's only, our cohorts are between nine and fifteen and they're smaller than usual, by, by a handful. Um, they love it because they're all together. So all the IB seniors are on A day, all the IB juniors are on B day. So they're all together so they can have that collaborative model. And then on their day that they're home, they can still work with their IB teacher remotely. And now they have that face-to-face to be able to do the hands-on, engage in the discourse and some of the hefty living, lifting that requires that face-to-face. And, you know, we don't know what will happen down the road if we end up going back every day. We don't know. But the kids I've talked to have actually enjoyed it.
Yeah, well, we don't, I, I don't even know what the number would be, but I'm, I would assume we lost some kids even if they decided to graduate early, rather than come back their senior year if they had enough credits, just knowing the condition, knows like, you know, it's going to be. I don't know what, I assume we had some. I don't know how, you know, I wouldn't know what number is, but I imagine those are, especially if you ever had enough for your honors programs, you had enough credits out there, you could go out.
Yeah.
And if you want to take virtual, you know, do you take virtual through Hawkeye or whatever, you know. So I imagine a lot of kids had some really challenging decisions to make for us.
So aren't, aren't these IB classes fairly small?
Right, between nine and fifteen and in the each cohort.
So are you saying that going A or B is equivalent to going both A and B?
No, the cohort is all together, so what they do on their non-face-to-face day is they're still working together remotely. So they'll get on and they'll either do Google Hangouts with their teacher or they'll Zoom. So we were able to keep those cohorts together.
So my question remains, is it equivalent to have A or B as opposed to A and B?
No, no.
All right. So then why don't we go with A and B?
I mean, I could definitely talk to Dr. Lindeman and I could talk to the administrators at the high school.
Stephanie, Dr. Moore, do you have any?
I think, I think, well, one thing to consider, one challenge to consider too is you having students who are taking singletons.
Oh, yeah, I have to think of that. Yes.
Because if you have a singleton class, you know, you got to come in just for one class.
Yes. Right.
Versus, you know, versus your group that's taking all IB, but you do, will have some, particularly I think foreign languages, you tend to end up with more singletons there probably, but.
Well, all the IB kids in the diploma program would take the world language too. It's part of their, all their courses. But you're right, some of those kids pick up another AP class or they take band or. Or they take band or orchestra.
Or if you're taking IB by itself, just a class, you wanted, you wanted IB physics.
Lyle, let me think through that and talk to Dr. Mohorn and Dr. Lindeman and find out what all those schedules look like.
Yeah.
I understand.
Yeah, I think that's a little above our scope that we can get completed tonight, I think, so. Does anybody have any just?
I do have a comment, um, going back to the displaying of the plaques.
Yes.
So I'm pretty sure you, you guys don't have a area, but I think with this accomplishment. Pushing for it to be displayed in in a place where outsiders, not just people that um. Going to the school every day and maybe possibly getting duplicate plaques, maybe a plaque in the front of the school or.
Uh huh.
And then where a lot of people that uh, come into the building, that don't normally come into the building, sporting events and things of that nature.
So Aster, I visited a bunch of different IB diploma world programs to see what they did. And I really wanted like this giant metal IB diploma symbol on the side of the high schools. Because I saw that it was really cool or this gigantic banner that draped down the side of the high schools. And I gave some autonomy back to the building administrators. I said, or I could do this beautiful plaque in the foyer. And so I wanted to honor the building principals too, but yes, I love. Let's continue to have a conversation, but for this reveal and you'll all be invited, it is a really cool, modern plaque that'll go in the foyer. The main entryway of both high schools. But I think we also need some.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I agree with that.
Thank you very much, Sharice. So we're good and we look forward to the presentation next Monday, learning more in depth on stuff too, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, now we will move on to our consent agenda this evening and we have, um, looks like. Seven items, um, item B is the minutes of the September fourteenth regular board meeting. Item C, personal appointments and adjustments. Item D. Bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. Item E, project search memorandum of agreement. Item F, joint education service agreement between Hawkeye Community College and Waterloo Schools. Item G, classroom space availability for open enrollment purposes and item H, board member travel. Are there any items that board members would like removed?
D is in Dog and G is in George.
D and G, perfect.
C is in Charlie and F is in Foxtrot.
Item C and E.
C, D, E. Okay, it looks like then we have B and H. As the only two that would go as a consent agenda. So could I have a motion to accept items B, the minutes of September fourteenth, twenty twenty board meeting, regular board meeting? And item H, board member travel.
Sub move.
Second. Thank you, Jesse and India. So that's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried five zero. Then. The um, next item then is item C, the personnel appointments and adjustments.
I move the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
Thank you, Aster. Second, yes. Thank you, Lyle, moved. Okay, and we have Kingsley here to um, speak with us a little bit about um, this.
Yeah, just briefly, um, just earlier today, right before the board meeting, I shared with you. A recommendation for termination of a contract and normally our process is because of the hearing timeline. Um, pursuant to two seventy nine fifteen, um, we allow for an individual, um, five days. Five, five actually, um, just calendar days to potentially request a hearing before the board. We normally then add it to the board agenda on the table if that individual doesn't request a hearing. However, just in accordance with our board process and protocol, uh, what we would like to do, uh, I'd like to recommend this evening is to. Um, go ahead and proceed and kick that to the um, Thursday special meeting. That would um, allow for any time for some correspondence, I think was shared, um, from the individual. On that Pam referenced at the uh, earlier, uh, earlier agenda item. So that would allow for us, for me to answer or respond to that. Um, it did not request a hearing and so there won't be any hearing prior to it coming before you on Thursday. Uh, but that was just a change in process. And so normally these would come and we would revise it again on the floor. Um, on the flip side, the reason why it wasn't on the agenda is because. If I put it on the agenda and the individual would have requested the hearing, I'd have had to remove it and done the same thing on the floor as well to tell you, hey. Could you please remove it? So it's really try to make a decision, um, as far as not knowing what the other individual was gonna do. And so in this case. Um, I just would recommend, um, at the pleasure of the board, if you would move that to the Thursday meeting.
Do we need to have a motion or anything? Okay, is all in agreement to move it?
Can I just ask? I'm looking at the date on this, August twenty first.
So we backdated, so it's effective. It's, it's a little bit late, um, or late in coming to you since it was in August. Just because of everything else we've been working through. And so this is one where, um, normally you would probably see it in the September board agenda, but we weren't trying to rush it. Or anything along those lines, but now since more than enough time has been exhausted since, um, you know, the three days for a voluntary quit. We're bringing it to you now.
Only that it potentially could have been with September fourteenth because we're still at September twenty eighth. So we wouldn't have made, yeah.
And I was just trying to think of the span of the individual, how does that come into play for that person during the, during this period, almost. A month, so I didn't know if it made a difference, but, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're a little bit surprised with the contact that we received today. That's the first contact that we've received from the individual since um, late June.
Okay, and that's why I'm just trying to get a timeframe of how this is proceeding, so, okay.
Yeah.
And what, I just had a question on that, Kingsley, uh, um, as far as a termination versus a resignation. It, does that, you know, when someone is applying for future jobs, as far as with the. Board of Education and is that a major like red flag with having a termination versus a resignation?
Doesn't necessarily mean a red flag for the BOEE. Um, our language changed in the recent, um. Board policy that you voted on a while back where. We may, um, or may not, or, but it says may, go um, and file a complaint against an individual's license. Um, that will be part of my response to you and the correspondence you receive later on this week in response to the letter. Um, there may be a situation where we may not in this case, um, just in following the BOEE. But that's where I printed out and shared with you the two seventy nine point fifteen, um, that's not the law. Those are the administrative rules as they pertain to the BOEE. And so we follow the law as far as the contract portion of that. Um, understanding that the BOEE from a licensure standpoint, um, can do what it do as a, do what it does as a licensure body. Um, but as far as our rights from the law standpoint, we feel pretty firm and confident as far as how we treated it.
Thank you.
I have a question and I see we got four more, uh, pairs, resignations. Uh, so two questions. How, how do we stand on pairs overall? What's it look like? You know, how, how many have we been able to? I don't see, I see a couple hires over here. But then, but basically. What's the current alignment of staff versus needs, uh, particularly in person versus virtual? Number of teachers and so forth, number of support people, do we, are we serving both? Uh, you know, groups of, of students?
We are. I mean, I think that Dr. Mohorn at our last meeting discussed some of the challenges with virtual. And that, you know, with the amount of students that we have on virtual, how can we work to support them? And so we tried to since that meeting reallocate some resources to support, uh, virtual. I know that Dr. Mohorn and I have to need to have a conversation about middle school virtual. Because there was some concerns as far as staffing from that standpoint, but we have moved and shifted some support that way. In general, what we've looked at as far as the elementary is really twenty kids or less. Uh, our highest classes, I think there are about three of them, go to about twenty three. Again, to make sure that we have the health and safety of our staff and students at the highest level. And so what that means is that. There's still the ability to, um, social distance groups appropriately with that number is still a workable number. And then the students come back, we're gonna have to have some conversations with you as far as how that changes and, and what we can do differently. So from a teaching standpoint and also then from a virtual standpoint, I think things are going well. To break things down from a Paris standpoint, um, you know, initially, and that's what I shared in the board update, I was concerned because. I had just received a rash of emails that was like boom, 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 boom in relation to resignations. But as we looked at it in conjunction with. Um, you know, last year or even the year prior, it's really along the same lines. The reasons are different. Some of them have given, some of our parents have given reasons as far as. Due to COVID or due to other job opportunities, the things along those lines, but it had, it's not a, it's a slight increase, but not anything that's statistically significant. And the difference obviously from last board agenda from this board agenda is many times. You would see us kind of rush and try to add, um, where you would see resignations, the actual hires. And so since we really follow that, um, you know, Pam asked for those at, on Tuesday to make sure that you get it on Thursday, we don't rush those anymore. And so you won't see it until the upcoming, the following board agenda, some of those changes.
I know that, um, Dr. Mohorn had mentioned the struggles and the. When, I think I asked the question, you know, we have a number of resignations and it might have been before, because of COVID. And I was mentioning how the support for online for the teachers. And that, you know, they're kind of inundated with a lot of students, like she mentioned like two hundred on a roster and she still has to maintain. Or he or she has to maintain the relationship with students online and how to balance that. Um. I was just thinking, is it possible that we could just hire some of those pairs? Because I, I'm still concerned about the three week, like. Contact or two week contact that these teachers are going to meet with the student virtual and the, and the student will never see a teacher. That's concerning to me. So I was just wondering if like, can we just maybe hire a pair or a. Assistant teacher, I don't know, that could be the middle person in between a week before, you know.
One of the, one of the things that, I didn't mean to cut you off, go ahead.
No, that was it. I just, that is alarming. I just think that's a long time before you see a teacher. For a three week period. So, you know, if the, if my concern is that I don't wanna be in the classroom. Can I maybe be that person who is on virtual and just be that contact in between time?
Yeah, so a couple of things happened since our last meeting, um, conversation with Dr. Mohorn as well. Uh, one of those things is that we had, had to do a. We had to clarify what we meant by contact, cause many of our teachers may have maybe participated in some type of small group Zooms. And didn't take that as an actual contact with the student. And so that was just some clarification that I think eased a lot of the burden that. Some of our virtual teachers were feeling. The other part of that is we did shift some pair of support. And so Lyle, back to your question and kind of in conjunction with India's as well. While we're seeing a reduced number of students in our, in person. We still have the same number of paras generally working. And so how do we utilize people in the building already or currently? To shift some of that support. I just got an email from one of our principals at the elementary level, actually, that was. Um, feeling some of the strain of uh, going through this new virtual process and saying that they already started to designate somebody in house. To work through and alleviate some of those concerns. And so it's happening, it just wasn't. You know, this is a new process that I think everybody was working through and as to Dr. Mohorn's credit, she was really thinking about, I don't wanna speak for her, step up here if she wants to. Um, thinking about the fact that we were gonna get hard, hit hard with a bunch of questions initially. And a lot of the questions in general were focused on, you know, how do I get on? How do I access tech related questions? Not necessarily content, um, based questions. And so as we work through the next month or next couple of weeks. I think some of those things are starting to die down as, as we have people, as we have some of our students remain a little bit more static in their choices as far as virtual or in person.
And I think, um, with this first conference at parent, parent teacher conference. I know that's gonna be a topic of conversation for a lot of parents coming through.
And one of the things that Dr. Mohorn shared out, and I don't know if, did it go out to all staff? Okay, went, shared out, so you may have received it, was that conferences for virtual teachers, um, they could begin scheduling them September twenty first. To give them more than enough time to make sure that they had that contact with students.
So I, I'm, and I'm just saying that to encourage parents, please, you know, if you have questions, concerns, virtual or in house. Please make sure that you do take this time, you know, um, the luxury of not, sometimes not being able to be in the building. Now you have the option to be online to have this connection with the teacher. So ask your questions and take the time, cause it's a. I don't say you have options, more options than before, so.
Correct.
So what's our average elementary class size versus last year?
Twenty. Twenty versus last year. I can't give you the numbers off the top of my head. We normally go from K two at twenty. Uh, three, four, between. Twenty and twenty five, twenty six. And then our fourth and fifth grade can get up to, you know, twenty five to about thirty in some classes. Now, as soon as I say that, I'm gonna have a lot of our principals, um, calling me, cause I gave you my range that I usually keep secret when I'm talking to them about it. Because obviously they're talking about, you know, the concerns within their own building in respect to their, um, to their class sizes, cause that is also building dependent as well. So we talk with each of our elementary principals usually starting as early as January about kind of the class sizes changes and go from there.
But I guess I was thinking that. It was around twenty three or something like that.
It was, the, the average is twenty. We have like about three, about, about two to three classes that are actually twenty three. There's no classes higher than twenty three.
Okay, this year, but I'm talking about last year when you took the overall average of elementary, it was. Like twenty three point something, wasn't it?
It would be around there, twenty three, twenty four with all, looking at all the grade levels. I just don't have the exact number, that's why I didn't wanna.
So if you do the same thing this year.
It would be significantly lower. It'd be, I mean, it would be twenty.
It'd be twenty.
It'd be nineteen, twenty, yeah.
And that kindergarten class though was way down, the kindergarten class.
Correct. And actually, Lyle, it'd be less than that. It could be lower. It could be almost eighteen, seventeen. Because we have some, twenty is kind of our max. We have other, we have some situations that were over, um, at twenty three. But by and large, a lot of our classes are around fifteen, sixteen students.
Could, could you get those numbers?
Absolutely. So you want the average from last year, but also the average for this year across the district?
So if it's really down to eighteen, then in effect. We have the same number of teachers. For twenty five percent fewer in-person students, is that?
Correct, but I would say then to flip on that, they're managing the COVID, the, the separation, the masks. I mean, they have a lot more, um, distractions in the class than they typically did.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, especially from a financial standpoint.
Correct.
You have the same number of in-person teachers, you have twenty five percent fewer teachers.
Correct.
Cause you got twenty five percent fewer students per class roughly. I, that's why I liked it.
No, correct.
Numbers. So there's extra cost then. Whatever we do for virtual is a cost over and above.
That's correct.
What it would have been.
Now, technically, we have been pulling, so when we had class sizes as low of, as low as ten, I think was the number. As low as ten, we pulled teachers from that grade level to support virtual. And so that's where, you know, we did pull from our existing teacher, um, pool to support virtual.
Anyway, I, I'd like to s. See the comparative.
By building or just average?
Uh, just overall, I guess. I don't really care, well.
Shouldn't even said anything. I'll do it both ways.
If you have it by building, but just to see, you know. Yeah.
Okay. It's all in the spreadsheet, I just don't have it right in front of me.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect you to. Actually, I, I expect you to have that memorized.
You know, I'm working on it. I'll be better next time.
You're being demanding. Um, any more questions for Kingsley? Okay, well, the superintendent's recommendation is the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any extensions? Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. We will now move on to item D, which is. The superintendent's recommendation is the Board of Education approve the bills dues and payable and the bills paid between board meetings.
Sub move.
Second.
Thank you. And discussion?
I just pulled this, I just had a quick question about maybe three items on here, which I'm. May not, this might be for Michael, but this might, might be a Dr. Mohorn question. Um, follow your strengths. Um, and imagination station and event now, are those all like curriculum?
I didn't hear all the question, but I know the imagination station is a pre-K. Program that they've used, I think, last year and then this year. It's like an assessment tool, that's what I was told.
Okay.
And I don't, what were the other two?
Follow your strengths.
Follow your strength.
Um, page fourteen.
Yeah, I don't know that one without looking it up.
Okay, and event now, um, page, it's just right underneath imagination station, page fourteen.
Yeah, I don't know that one offhand either.
Okay.
But I will get back to, this is India asking?
Yes, it is.
She knows follow your strengths, Michael, Dr. Morehorn's coming in.
It's not my department, but I just happen to know what it is, it, um, is actually a person who comes and does strength-based, um, professional development with different groups in our district.
Strength-based, what does that mean?
So they do like maybe the DIS training or finding out what your leadership strengths are. As a teacher or a para or administrator or X group.
Got it, so this is like maybe what you do on your professional day?
Yes.
Finding out the skills that you may have.
Got it, yep, and building upon those, yep.
Okay, thank you. That was it, uh, please let me know what event now is, I'm, I'm curious.
Yes, we will have, um, Pam will look into it and get the information.
Okay.
To the board.
That was it, thank you.
Okay, so all in favor of approving the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board members?
Aye.
Any abstentions, chair votes aye? Are you sorry about that?
Abstention, not abstention.
First mistake. Okay, now we will move on to, it looks like item E. Which is the Project Search Memorandum of Agreement, and that is on page nineteen. And the recommendation is, the superintendent's recommendation is the Board of Education approve the Project Search Memorandum of Agreement as outlined through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, and we have Kingsley and Ivan here to, um, help us with this understanding.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna go through one piece and then Ivan's going to give you a brief overview. Uh, the reason why this is coming before you is there is a, a, a shift or a change in regards to. Who was in care of the employees, um, that are with the job trainers and so you saw that prior to. Um, in your board agenda packet where we became now the employer for the job trainers and there were two reasons why that was. And I think I spelled that out in kind of the introductory doc- documented, it was for recruitment and retention, they were seeing a lot of turnover. As it pertained to their job trainers and much of that was due to the benefits, much of it was due to not having leave. Um, nothing has changed from a funding standpoint, because we're still using the same funding, but the way that their system was structured. It didn't allow for, um, job trainers to receive those benefits or receive that leave and so that was a major, that was. Primarily the major change that we wanted to make sure that we brought it to your attention tonight and then Ivan is gonna. Um, share some more information about the overall program and this is something that you've asked previous.
All right, just a really quick overview of Project Search. Uh, Project Search, for those who don't know, is a one-year internship program with Allen Hospital. Um, the objective for Project Search is interns to obtain competitive employment, um, and this is for students who have IEPs. And so some of the outcome data, the reasons why we would do this is right now, you know, students with IEPs are typically underemployed, uh, in the general population. And so the outcome data for Project Search, uh, as a, as an entire group is seventy-eight percent of the interns who go through that program. End up competitively employed, the, the data from our Project Search for the last four years, this is year five. The first year, twenty sixteen, seventeen, a hundred percent of the students were gainfully employed, seventeen, eighteen, it was eighty percent. Eighteen, nineteen, it was, uh, ninety-one percent, and then nineteen, twenty, it was eighty-one percent. The two students who were not employed this last year are choosing not to get employment because of COVID and they've both said that as soon as COVID is done. You know, they're going to pursue meaningful employment, um, the jobs that they get then are competitive and play, and pay, at least sixteen hours a week in a permanent, non-seasonal position. And so Project Search is kind of the vehicle that helps them obtain that meaningful and gainful employment.
So how many students have there been each year?
Twelve students per year, except for last year, there were eleven.
Okay, thank you.
And so, just to clarify, do we actually, actually hire since we're now taking over or we won't be doing that, like the, as a trainer, sorry?
So we hire the job trainers.
Oh, we will, okay, that's all right.
We employ them, uh, throughout the school year.
And what places, um, provide employment?
I have that, I thought you would ask. So after they've left, they go to places like, uh, Allen Hospital, the Crossroads Cinema, UNI, Salvation Army, uh, Omega Cabinet, Cabinetry. Culver's Shields, Hometown Foods, uh, Blackhawk County YMCA, Single Speed Brewing, I'm interested in that. Uh, Health Park Valet, Pillow Windows and Cook Construction, just as an example of somewhere they get employed.
That's awesome.
Yeah, right.
So why is there just twelve?
That's the number on the program, if you have a search program, each business that they work with can only have twelve interns. That's just the way the national organization has set it up.
So we're the business with twelve.
Right.
And we've fanned them out.
Yep, so they start at Allen Hospital for that year and then after that they move on to gainful employment.
Perfect.
First, I'd like to say, you got something, Jesse?
Go right ahead.
It's an awesome program. Uh, it is, um, but I want, can you, uh, talk a little bit about the age, the seventeen to thirty, um, age range? For those that might not understand that.
So for Project Search, yeah, what they do, what, the way that we do it in, in the state of Iowa, when a student's had their four years of high school then. Um, this is actually a fifth year of high school, technically the student's considered a high school student, they still have an individual education plan. But they've met their graduation requirements, so this is really just vocational training for that entire fifth year. So most of the students in our Project Search program would be between eighteen and nineteen.
But in other places, it could be thirty years old?
In, in theory, it could, um, again, the way that we do it in Iowa is right after high school to get that vocational training.
And, and has it ever been, I know like for, having students educated, we're required till twenty-one, correct, for the state?
Students can be, yes, so if a student was in five years of high school, then this would be effectively their sixth year, or could be their sixth year.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, it was, I think, the last presentation I had on this was really, really moving, the testimony at night was, uh, was. Maybe the most moving testimony I think I've ever seen, probably heard in this board meeting since I've been here and. I really, you know, grew a lot of appreciation for the program, most of it for these young adults in our community, so I feel I should we're continuing on with that.
So they don't get there, so they don't graduate until after five years, even though their coursework is done after four, is that correct?
Correct, the IEP teams determine the unmet need, so they're here for five.
Okay.
We're getting this, yeah, technical, sorry, I just hung up, but I didn't touch it. But I would like to say that this is just another awesome, I think, um. Initiative of the district that we're, we're educating all levels of all of our students, you know, we've had the high performing, we've had students that need. Extra help and I just think that is just awesome that we are, are, um, working at all levels and educating and. Employing in, the employability of all of our students, so thank you.
That's an awesome, go ahead.
Going back to what Lyle just mentioned, um, about the graduating in four years, I think he said. Um, I think they're still able to graduate with their class, I think this is more considered a, an internship kind of thing where.
So I think typically they walk the stage at the end of their fourth year.
Yes, that's what I mean.
Really to generate funding, we keep the IEP for that fifth year because they have those unmet needs, so as far as I know, they walk the stage, you know, they get a, they get a certificate or diploma. Uh, but then we just kind of hang on to that for that fifth year until they complete their, their internship.
Yeah, I think on the graduation rate, tax goes in your five-year number versus your four-year number.
Correct.
E, on paper anyway.
On paper, yep.
But they do walk with their class.
Correct, yes. And if they end up gainfully employed, I think that's the end result.
Super, and it fits our mission, you know, employing and being a citizen of the community, so, awesome.
Any other questions?
I was just gonna say, well, I'm, I'm glad that we are taking the reins on this, because I'm hoping this to be long-term. And we can, even if funding is not existed two years, we can still support this, because it's not like this is something that we definitely need to keep, so. Kudos, uh, thinking long-term.
All right, are we good to, um, vote on the superintendent's recommendation to approve the Project Search Memorandum of Agreement? As outlined through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, all in favor?
Aye.
Any names, chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. We will move on to our next item agenda, which is item F. Which is the Board of Education approve the Joint Education Service Agreement between Hawkeye Community College and Waterloo Schools as outlined.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, thank you, and discussion, Sharice?
Uh, my question is, so all these courses listed. Including all courses at the Career Center are under this agreement, is that correct?
Correct, that was this year's agreement, again, we apologize, due to COVID, everything was pushed out later, this is not for next year, this is all the courses this year. And, uh, under the liberal arts, seven of those are at East and West High Schools, so Comp one, Comp two, Western Civ one through three. Fundamentals of Oral Communication and Statistics, the rest are all at the Career Center or Elkhron.
Okay. Okay, do, do we have agreements with any other institution than Hawkeye?
Kirkwood and DMAC hold eleven more concurrent classes, bringing it to a total of sixty-three. Fifty-two concurrent are through Hawkeye, by the way, the term concurrent is community college verbiage.
Okay, so, so what was, what was Kirkwood again, how many classes?
Um, I'm, those are all at the Career Center, Kirkwood and DMAC together make up eleven more. But, uh, is, Jeff Frost is not here tonight, but when we meet with you on Monday, you'll see that we're moving most of that over to Hawkeye. So Hawkeye would absorb most of the concurrent courses in the twenty twenty-one school year.
Lyle, we, we signed agreements with DMAC and Kirkwood last year, I will double check on that to see if that, um. If that was just a, a rolling continuing agreement, or if we need to re-sign that every year, but we did sign those last year for the Career Center.
Yeah, I, it seemed like one of my thought was the plum, I've been, the plumbing program was with one of the other. Yeah, I, I, I don't see it on here, but it seems like it's in the back of my mind, it might have been the plumbing, it was something that we had to go to one of the other.
But we don't have any agreements with. Any institution other than a community college.
No, we have PSEO, post-secondary enrollment options with the University of Northern Iowa. And we offer about another thirteen post-secondary enrollment options through UNI.
So if they take that class, they get a credit from UNI?
They get the credit in the class from UNI and we pay a flat rate of two hundred and fifty, it's considered post-secondary enrollment. Where with concurrent, then we pay, if it's our staff, twenty percent the cost of the class, so for most classes, I think we pay about a hundred and twenty. I think it's around six hundred for a Hawkeye three-credit class.
So the PSEO, that, that, those are taught at UNI?
Correct, and the kids are responsible for getting there and, and, um, we do have that agreement as well.
So it's thirteen of theirs, is there any, uh. Is there any possibility that some of these courses, uh, with Hawkeye? Would also be sanctioned by another community college or another college in general, or is it always just one for one?
Well, speaking from personal experience, the reason I picked those seven liberal arts is because they're recognized. As the liberal arts equivalent at UNI Iowa and Iowa State, so it's not just Hawkeye, they also did transfer to four-year colleges. And the ones at the Career Center also transfer not just to Hawkeye, so it's not saying that I'm planning to go to Hawkeye, it's saying. I'm planning to go a lot of different universities that accept those, those courses.
Yeah.
I guess my understanding was not many are concurrent with more than Hawkeye.
Um, you'd have to ask Jeff about the ones at the Career Center, but all the ones I have at East and West are transferred to the Regents.
Oh, and I, I would agree with Sharice in that, I had children that all went to small private colleges and all of those transferred as credits.
I think everything, I can tell you that everything that we, that, that Tori signed up for this year. We checked the transfer guides ahead of time.
Yeah.
To make sure that we're, what college that she was looking at, that it would actually transfer in before we actually picked the classes, so and most of them. It's kind of interesting, because most of them, you, you will find two or three different, uh, websites that kind of give you information on where to, to transfer in.
Yeah.
But even if it's not listed, it doesn't mean it won't, it just means that nobody's tried to do it yet and you just need to maybe see what they'll give for that.
Transfer under another elective in college, because I had a, my son had twelve credits go over and they were Hawkeye classes held at West High.
But what, what she's done though, uh, what, you know, because, you know, we've had a luxury kind of having conversation, but. By offering that, like the FOC with the Comp one, Comp two, that is covering most of their English requirements now, but you gotta have those free. To get the two.
Get the full credit.
Full credit at, at the four years, so, but, um, I can tell you that we, like I said, we got, uh, Victoria's taken four classes this time and. Uh, all three out of state colleges we looked at would accept them, if from Hawkeye, so.
They're more and more readily accepted at multiple community colleges, state schools and out-of-state schools.
And I think, Lyle, initially, there was something with maybe some of the, um, the, like, the HVAC and the things like that. That only would be acceptable at Hawkeye, you know, they wouldn't go anywhere else in a trade specifically, I believe.
So is it, uh, unreasonable to put in the course catalog? The institutions that that course is accepted by?
I don't know.
Well, that could be a lengthy list.
I think you're opening up, because you're not even sure what a lot of these colleges.
A lot of them, like, a lot, sometimes they'll accept a class, but they're just gonna give you a English, say, English credit for it or something else, because. It's not a requirement for them, they'll give you some elective credit, but it doesn't fulfill a requirement class for them. But I think, most of our cases, I think we got requirement classes.
Right.
For everything.
And, and I share, and Jeff's wonderful about sharing with the Career Center, and I share all the liberal arts ones with our counselors. So they have a transfer guide to the state schools and to the community colleges in Iowa that are the ones that most of our kids. Do end up attending and so we look at how that transfers and, and they're, the counselors are wonderful, having those one-on-one conversations. Because it might be a different institution and we often say, all you have to do, it's super simple, go to the equivalency guide of that university and you can pull up Hawkeye. And you can pull up any transfer guide there too.
Oh, so much better now, it's online, I remember trying to do it with old books that you had to, you know. Find out what college, you get your transfer guide and, and, you know.
You're showing age.
I know it.
But I think if we try to provide too much information, like the, um, AP classes, some universities. Will accept a three, some will not accept anything but a four, you know, so I think you're getting into a can of worms, trying to say what the college specifically will accept.
Well, even like, they may accept a free, but they may not give you the, the requirement class, they may just give you a, English elective class for that and you still gotta take the requirement class, so. It's a little bit gray on how that goes.
Okay.
Any more questions for Sharice? Okay, well, I will make a recommendation to approve the Board of Education Joint Education Service Agreement. Between Hawkeye Community College and the Waterloo Schools as outlined, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. That will bring us now to the exhibit G, which is. The superintendent's recommendation is the Board of Education certifies that sufficient classroom space exists at all grade levels. But not necessarily all grade levels in every building for open enrollment into the district for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And approves the continuation of policy six oh one point three.
So move.
Thanks, India, thank you, Jesse, and we have Dr. Morehorn here to answer any of our questions.
I, can you just explain this, this was, I didn't understand this at all. What this is, is it something that's brought every year and what it is, is just saying that if we have students that want to open enroll into Waterloo. That we do have sufficient space to accept them, doesn't say that we will or we won't or any of that, it says that we have the space to accept them. That doesn't mean it's school-specific, because it's not school-specific, so we may have space at third grade at school A, C and E. But not at the other. That doesn't mean it's school-specific, because it's not school-specific, so we may have space at third grade at School A, C, and E, but not at the other school. So it's just saying that we have space to accept open enrolled students, doesn't say whether we will or not, it's just, it's just the space itself.
What does our open enrollment number look like, not B.C. before COVID?
I have no clue, I don't do open enrollment.
Okay, I was, I was just curious, I.
I don't do anything with open enrollment at all, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
I can, we can check and see what those numbers are, I know, um, Terrorist Department does keep a, a running list of that, so I can check with Linda, and we'll get that information.
I don't know how often that we don't have space, that's why I was a little confused by this policy. Like, have, we been in a situation where we were, and Lyle's sticking his head like, no.
I don't think we've ever said not, this is kind of boilerplate, but I guess given the spacing of students this year, I'm not so sure this is as automatic as it.
This is for twenty-one, twenty-two though.
Yeah, it's for next year.
Yeah, it's next year.
It's for next year.
Mm-hmm. Well.
I mean, I think we have to see how it goes this semester, and what trends are looking like, and then we may have to do something different if indeed, you know, the COVID situation continues.
It doesn't say that we'll actually accept, if we feel like we have, that we can't beat the capacity, we could always say, you know, because it, it, it might be a certain grade we can't, you know, and, or.
It says it exists at all grade levels.
Okay. And, and it would exist at all grade levels, it may be only at one, one grade level, is that one specific school only? It just depends on the year, again.
And is this kind of like a technicality, because it's saying it's per Iowa code, that to get Iowa funding, we're gonna have to say this is available. If we say it's not, we're not gonna get dollars.
It's, exactly, that's why it's brought every year.
Yeah.
It's exactly.
Period, so, so is this, Stephanie, uh, Dr. Moorehorn, is this the certification, just the vote is the certification, or is there a form, uh, once it gets, gets closer to that school year, that needs to be filled out, because it says certify, the Board must certify that sufficient space, classroom space is available, exists?
No, it's just, it's just this, coming to the, to the Board, like we're doing right now, just to say, yes, we will have space, or we do have space. Again, we don't have to say specifically at C school, we just, every grade level, we will have space, whether that's five seats or fifty seats, we don't specify.
And it's because it's a public school.
Right.
We have to, because it's public, and then Terrorist Department does the open enrollment.
Right, and the logistics of, yeah, all of that.
The schools and in and out of clusters, and, yeah.
But this does obligate us, it does obligate us to a certain, in other words, if a student wants to transfer in, now that we passed that, we can't say, oh, because of COVID or any other reason, we really don't have space anymore, we can't say that, right? This takes away that argument.
I don't believe, I don't know the rules of open enrollment, because that's School and Community Relations that does everything with open enrollment. Ed Services doesn't, so I couldn't tell you those rules.
Because there's no number on this, so say, all of a sudden fifty kids want to come in at a specific grade level, this says we can't say, no, we don't have room.
No, I bel, I believe this is saying that to meet Iowa code law, we have to say as a public school, that we would not deny a student if they wanted to come here, but as far as an open enrollment, we have to, because of our equity in our district, we have to allow.
Yeah, we would still have to fall under the diversity plan guidelines and all of that, as far as open enrollment is concerned.
But if we say we can't deny, then if the situation comes up, we can't deny.
If you read this, it says certify that sufficient classroom space exists to accommodate incoming students. That's all you're saying, is that it does exist, so we're saying it exists, but we're not saying you're gonna be able to come in.
It's one and the same to me, that's just saying exactly the same thing.
Because they would still have to go through the open enrollment.
That we have set up as a board guideline, that you have to go in and out of the cluster in a high SES and a low SES.
But we can't deny it. We can place them somewhere, but we can't deny them, is that what this says?
I would say legally, probably. We do, we deny open enrollments all the time, Lyle.
Yeah, these are good questions, I would say, based on past practice, it's both superintendents have to agree, so if there were an extenuating circumstance like health and safety guidelines around, in this case, COVID, if Dr. Lindeman did not agree that there was adequate space to accommodate the student, the buck would stop with her, so to speak, and it isn't automatically rubber stamped as an open enrollment application.
Okay. I mean, it's never been tested that way, but we may see.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both very much, any further questions on that? Okay, so we are voting to accept the superintendent's recommendation that the Board of Education certifies that sufficient classroom space exists at all grade levels, but not necessarily all grade levels in every building for open enrollment into the district for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and approves the continuation policy of six oh one point three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. And we do not have to discuss Board member travel, because we probably don't get to travel anywhere anyway. But we have lots of Zoom calls, we can, but we have lots of Zoom calls, so thanks for approving that, guys.
Do we have to approve virtual travel?
Uh, yeah, virtual travel, maybe we do need to approve that. So let's go on to item eight, if you will, that is page forty-eight in your board packets. And that is the engagement letter for the bond underwriter, and the superintendent's recommendation is to approve the engagement letter with Robert W. Baird to serve as underwriters for the two thousand and twenty school infra sales and service tax revenue bonds.
So move.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, and we will turn this over to Michael Coughlin on the phone.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, we have gone through all of the steps of, of publicly approving all of the players that are involved in the, uh, save bond that we are about ready to put out for bid, and the underwriters, uh, were chosen, Robert W. Baird, and this is just the contract, approving the contract for the services that they provide, and finding the investors uh, to bid on the, the bonds that we have for sale, so that's the purpose of what, what they do.
So the overall fee, it says three sixty-five per thousand dollars, is that, does that just escalate up to twenty-three and a half million, or?
I did, um, I haven't calculated that out, um, I am going by, um, an exhibit that was presented at the Finance Committee that did list the estimated cost for this, for the underwriting. Uh, and it was, uh, just about eighty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, because it reads not greater than three sixty-five, so that would be less than that. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, then we will call a vote to the superintendent's recommendation to approve the engagement letter with Robert W. Baird to serve as underwriters for the two thousand and twenty school infrastructure sales and service tax revenue bonds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. Okay, now we will move on to item nine, item J, the transfer of general funds, cares funds to food services. The superintendent recommends that the Board approve the transfer of three hundred and four thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents from the general fund to the food service fund to cover the deficit caused by the coronavirus pandemic.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second, thank you, India, and back to you, Michael.
Um, I did, uh, send out an exhibit for this today, and did everybody have a chance to look at that? Okay.
I got it, I did not get a chance to look at it, but I can look at it.
It should be in his email.
Okay.
Okay. So there was a lot of changes due to the pandemic closures and the grab-and-go meals, and, uh, the situation that we were in as far as, uh, the state, um, requesting, and maybe I see strongly requesting, that we continue to pay all of our staff, um, and that included the food service. Um, but as you can imagine, we did not have the participation that we normally would do, uh, in a school year, so we were paying, uh, more labor costs, less food, um, but compared to the revenue that we would normally get. And I tried to show you, um, just in a four-year comparison of the areas that saw some change. Um, and I'm going back to the email that I sent today with this, of just saying that the revenues, um, saw some changes based on, um, we didn't have daily student fees, uh, that dropped a hundred percent from last year, because we went to all CEP schools, so there shouldn't have been any, uh, revenue there. Um, the sixteen-twenty account up on the top, toward the top of the page, that is, um, student à la carte and adult meals. Um, so there was revenue there, but, uh, it was down forty-seven percent from last year. Um, the state meal reimbursement, because we get most of our revenue from food service, from the federal reimbursement system and the state reimbursement system, um, but the state reimbursement system basically shut down when, uh, the COVID closures started, so we saw almost a fifty percent decline in that revenue. Um, the forty-five-fifty revenue was special food service cares money, it was cares money just for the food service program, um.
Michael, was that federal or state?
Okay, I'm, which one?
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry, federal, that was all federal dollars for that ninety-two thousand.
Yep, and I, I gave you the wrong number on that, that's forty-fifty-six, and that was all federal money, cares money that came directly to, um, schools for the pandemic, uh, arrangement of how we did food service. So when you look at what we normally got for federal, last year we got five point one million, this year we got four point oh, um, but another almost a million from the cares money. Um, so between the two, we got, uh, most of what we did the year before, but we were expecting that to go higher, so that's also a, a loss of revenue that we would have gotten under normal circumstances. So when you look at the total of the revenue for the food service, it's been running in the last two years, um, about four, six point four million dollars, and this year it was five point seven. So we were, um, about six hundred thousand below our expected revenue, but when you look at the, um, expenses down below, and there's really not a lot of, uh, difference, uh, from year to year, uh, even in the COVID year, except for the price of food, because we just served less, so we purchased less. Um, but instead of having, um, six point four million in expenses, we had six million in expenses. So when you take that from the five point seven million of the reduced revenue number, uh, we're three hundred and four thousand short. Um, and it is, it is not a study of exactly what happened during the pandemic time. These numbers are coming from a full year, uh, total operations of food service and revenue and expense. But, uh, we all know the vast majority of this change came because of the COVID closing. So that was part of the cares money that came to the general fund, that we could, um, make up that shortfall with cares money, um, to the food service. Um, and that's something that we have to do one way or the other, you cannot have a negative food service number. Um, you have to, um, supply it with general fund money in every other year. But this year that it's a, it was a pandemic cause, um, it is what most schools are doing as far as making up that difference, is using part of their cares money to make that up. So that is the recommendation, that, uh, we cannot do that just on our own, the administration, it has to be a Board-approved action to transfer that money from the general fund to food service to make up that shortfall.
So what's the, do you have an idea what we're forecasting for two thousand and twenty-one?
Uh, we have not yet, it's, you know, there's a lot of changes with that as well, and we are looking at going through September and October, and then start analyzing, uh, what kind of participation we had, uh, and what we can expect for the rest of the year, and then we're going to have to deal with where shortfalls are showing themselves. So it's something that's going to have to be addressed, um, in a lot of detail. Um, but getting a couple of months of participation, um, data will help us to decide that.
Between the hybrid model and being roughly twenty percent, twenty percent virtual, I mean, that should, that, your, your revenue stream there on the sixteen-twenty will probably be significantly impacted again this year, more so than two thousand and twenty.
Yeah, we certainly, I mean, I'm certainly anticipating that we're gonna have shortfalls there.
If we go a whole year, if we go a whole year in this model. Yeah.
Because we, just because of the lack of participation.
And will, will there still be cares funds existing that we can use for that, or have we exhausted all that?
The cares fund, the cares fund money is basically used up. Um, so whether there will be additional money that comes through for that, we don't know. Um, but otherwise, it will be up to the general fund to take care of that.
So going forward, are we obligated, I'm guessing that the number of meals served is down by about thirty, thirty-five, maybe forty percent. Are we obligated?
I haven't looked at that detail, Lyle, so I don't know, but.
Well, I'm just saying with twenty-five percent virtual and high schools on halftime, as, whatever it is. My question is, uh, are we obligated to keep all the food service staff? Or at least by attrition, can we not replace and reduce staff to, to be more in alignment with, uh, with the, uh?
Kingsley's coming up.
I was gonna hand it over to Kingsley.
And on those lines, Kingsley, when, just going through this, it looks like the, the salaries paid were seventy thousand higher in two thousand and twenty. Um, obviously, I understand, you know, the social security would be about the same, retirement about the same, health benefits that ran up, so that's why that's up, but I, it seems. So, that's why that's up, but I, it seems, why would that be up about seventy thousand higher when? I mean, I know we did additional things in over the summer, but we didn't work for a long time in between there too.
Well, and I think, the other thing, and also just, I, give me just a second. There's other thing that I consider while you were talking about the virtual, you know, purchasing now. I don't know what percentage of kids are coming in, getting, aren't we giving food? Yeah, I mean, how many virtual kids are coming in, getting food that there's, I don't, it probably not, probably not twenty percent, but it's, there's a number in there, probably.
Now you made him mad.
Okay.
So, there's a couple of questions that I heard. One was around staffing. I can answer in a moment. The other one was a virtual food number. I have that. I just have it in my spreadsheet back there. And then what was the, there was one more question. Sue, you asked it. Oh, the discrepancy. Okay, well, I can't, the virtual food number and the discrepancy, I'm gonna get back to you on, because I just don't have that number right in front of me. But the staffing consideration, we can. That's just a longer conversation. So, we, we could potentially allow for attrition to occur, to reduce the size. The question would be, how quickly could we then hire staff back as we may shift, um, students back to, um, to in-person?
Seems like we would just allow attrition to, I mean, in theory, well, let me ask this question. In theory, can we lay off?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we got A, lay off so that the workforce matches the workload. Number two, let attrition, which I would think we would definitely do that, take its, take its, you know, proper role and then if and when, everybody comes back and if it's the same number of students and, and so forth. If it goes back to normal, then we would hire, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely, uh, a point of consideration that we've noticed, um, with the numbers and looking at staffing overall. We haven't yet sat down with our food service group, um, Heather and Shelley and obviously Marty in charge of that department to discuss any further. Um, but it is a consideration. I think that would be, again, something that we would ultimately discuss and potentially, obviously, discuss with you and then recommend. The food service group, I mean, not to get too into the weeds, is a tight-knit group. You don't normally see the level of turnover as you do in other departments. And so, that's why you hear the trepidation and hesitation in my voice. Um, but it's something we can look into. It's just something that is gonna be a lo- a longer conversation. And obviously, as Michael discussed, what you saw was the number over the course of the year and obviously COVID impacted it. We don't wanna jump too soon in making any type of decisions right now, just because things may shift. Um, and as I was saying before, I mean, in the event that something happens and we either lay off or furlough employees and then all of a sudden, we have a shift at our trimester and semester break, it does become a little bit more challenging to bring those staff back for many different reasons. One, finding a job. Two, their feelings about the district. Three, um, you know, the reallocation of the positions in the event that we do move forward with, um, that proposal, how that would shift and change some things as well. So, Lyle, as far as answering your question in theory, absolutely. It's just, we're talking about that level of movement. We wanna sit down and talk about it a little bit more extensively.
Well, I think the projection number would help the conversation, but.
Let me be clear. When we already have more staff than work and if someone retires, quits, resigns, I guess I would be very, very disappointed if we automatically fill that position when we don't need them.
In this environment, in this environment right now, you're saying?
Yeah.
Right. Uh, yes. So, yes, I, I'm just, I want the board to make sure that as we're looking at the snapshot of this time right now, we obviously, when we make staffing decisions, we look at over the course of the year. And so, like I said, more for conversation as far as move forward, but I, I understand the gist of where you're getting at.
And do we have any figures, I mean, so far this year, like, for lunches? I know it's only been a month.
Yeah, that's something I just need to go back to my table. I actually already did the class sizes just while I was sitting back there and look at the numbers and see whether or not Heather updated it. But I should be able to get you that either tonight or even tomorrow, just because we have it available. She updates it on a regular basis.
And these were all just last year's numbers for last nineteen twenty.
I mean, it, it, the, the subject may change if there's more cares money or something else that comes about, but right now, we don't. There, there is nothing, so, and we, if we got it from a general fund, I mean, it's something else is not getting done that, you know, from that fund, so.
Right.
So, I mean, that, I mean, it's an important conversation to have, you know, it's definitely.
But I think it was, it was part of the last cares, uh, stipulation that you didn't lay anybody off.
That's correct.
All right.
Yeah.
Correct.
But we're not in that situation.
Right, correct. In the last school year.
And as you, as you can tell from, that's what this is the, um, deficit from is from last year. It's different conversation.
But even then, if someone quit, you weren't forced to replace them, were you?
No, we were not forced to replace them, no.
To meet the care, the CARES Act didn't require.
Correct. No, it did not require that.
Just said you couldn't lay anybody off.
Okay. Any more questions for Kingsley? Michael? No? Are we ready to vote then? Um, the question is that the board approve the transfer of three hundred and four thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents from the general fund to the food service fund to cover the des- deficit caused by the coronavirus pandemic.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Okay, now we are on to item K, which is on page fifty-nine in your packet. And we do have copies in front of us as this was, um, provided to us from Michael. And let me get to the motion, please. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the resolution fixing the date of sale of approximately twenty-five million dollars of school infra- infrastructure sales service and use tax revenue bonds, series twenty twenty and approving official statement.
Someone?
Second. Seconded, you're out, Michael.
Okay, I gotta make sure I let this muted there. Um, we have gone through a pretty difficult process of trying to fit all of the factors into this bond sale. Um, just, uh, we have the environment of new enrollment. We have the environment of COVID uncertainties. We have the environment of the, um, prediction of what our save money is going to be next year, uh, and that's been conservative. So, we've kinda hit this whole, uh, plan, um, in the wrong time. Uh, our enrollment may be, may be dropping a little bit. Uh, it, it is in many areas and we lost, uh, revenue per student under the save calculation. So, when we borrow money, we have to have enough coming in, in the current year. It doesn't matter how much we have in the bank. It matters what we have coming in as new revenue that can be committed to this borrow. So, we were, uh, on September fourteenth, you had approved the same motion to say we were gonna have a bond sale today and then that you would approve that sale tonight. Well, in the process of, um, working through all of the variables, we had a new player, uh, present interest. One of the banks, one of the main banks in the country that, uh, normally buys a lot of municipal bonds, um, uh, gave us a bid of interest. That they were, they were interested in dealing with this. Um, but because of the factors that we have, uh, the other environmental factors that we are dealing with is, um, we are calculating this borrow and we are also waiting for, uh, the insurance settlement on Lowell. And we are also planning another project in the near future. So, all of those things had to go into the calculations of do we have enough money, uh, to ver- to verify that we have, uh, proper revenue to ensure to all of the investors that we can make our payment. Well, I'm gonna go long story short. And because of factors of enrollment and, um, drop in dollars per student and the project schedule that we are looking at in the next couple of years, um, we could not get our payback schedule, uh, down to ten years. We were trying to do that so banks could, uh, bid on this because that's, um, a typical bank borrow, uh, on bonds that they go only ten years. Um, other investors will go twenty and that's the common amount. Um, but in, in the, uh, marketplace and the capabilities that we have in the dollars that we do have, we were trying to hold that to fifteen or less. Um, but as, getting back to a shorter version here, um, the private sale with the bank could not be met in ten years. We couldn't, um, meet all the requirements of the costing and the payback schedule that it would meet the bank's, um, parameters. Um, but what it did do is we are following through with a public sale and we are planning the public sale this Thursday. Um, the first, um, M, the first schedule on this was, um, when we said tonight was going to be the public sale, um, it didn't work out with the market factor issues. And we, and it was basically because enrollment wasn't known for sure. Um, because we have to guarantee that ability. It's called parity that we have the capability of making our payments, uh, and not putting that in jeopardy. Um, and we are not. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't structure it that way that anything would ever be in a place that we couldn't make payment. Um, but we were trying to keep it to ten years and that was not possible to keep banks involved. So, we are back to doing a public sale, but because of all of the work that, um, Piper did and Aylers did, um, we are positioned to do the sale, a public sale this Thursday. And we are using an estimated enrollment. And if it is, if it has to change a little bit, we should have enough cushion in our payback schedule of fifteen years to cover any, uh, adjustment in enrollment that doesn't come in as strong as we're expecting. Um, so that's where we're at tonight. We're changing the date of the sale from today, September twenty-eighth, to October first. Um, and with that, that official statement, um, catalog that you, um, had in your packet last time, um, I didn't print it all out. I just sent you a PDF file of it. Basically, the only thing that's changed in it is saying that it's, uh, a fifteen-year payback rather than an eleven. So, uh, all of that has to be re-voted by the board to say, yes, we're still standing behind this official statement and we are ready to go ahead with the public sale on October first.
Questions or comments?
Michael, does this then require approval by the board on October first?
Yes, it does. After the bids are accepted, you will have the, you will have to, uh, give approval accepting that bid to complete the sale.
And on the fifteen-year, it doesn't mean we can't pay it back sooner if we can afford so, correct?
Um, yes, you can put in, um, all statements in it to pay it back earlier. Um, but I, I know even when we get the final number and even though fifteen years is the most that we would do, uh, we're going to look at seeing if we can get that a little bit shorter, uh, when we know the exact enrollment number and we can, um, fit, fit all the pieces in place. But this is a worst-case scenario right now, but we need that as a cushion until we know what the, um, enrollment number is.
But assuming the interest rate is less than our existing bonds, if there's an opportunity to pay them back early, we would choose to do that first, wouldn't we?
Um, there are call dates on a couple of the other bonds. So, yes, there is possibility of improving our situation as the years, there's not too many years where a couple of them are coming up.
Okay. Any other questions? Astor, India? I think this presents us with a good opportunity. I appreciate, you know, the board and all the work that you've done, Michael and Piper and, and, um, to get this and even if we do have to go a few more years, it's, it's better than a twenty-year. I mean, for sure.
Yeah.
So, and we did talk about it at finance, Shanley, Lyle and I and Michael, so. Okay, all right. With that, it looks like there are no further questions. So, I would like to take a vote on the recommendation that the Board of Education approve the resolution fixing the date of sale of approximately twenty-five million dollars school infra- structure sales service and use tax revenue bonds, series twenty twenty and approving the official statement. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All against, yeah. Five-o vote and that motion carries. Thank you very much, Michael, for your expertise and knowledge on that. Um, now it is time to move on to the superintendent's report, which we do not have tonight. Um, we just wish Dr. Lindeman, um, good health and that she feels better. And then from that, we'll go information from board members. And Shanley has a nice little note here that we start with Lyle tonight with information from board members.
Um, I just have one general comment and then, uh, again, I think Waterloo is in good shape in terms of leadership, in terms of policy. And that's not true of every district in the state, so I won't go any further than that.
Thank you, Lyle. Astor?
I'll agree with Lyle and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. We have agreement tonight. We'll go with Jesse next.
Uh, just, I guess, you know, uh, you know, for maybe families are, you know, you know, just push that your kids are, if you're doing virtual and under, if they're doing hybrid A B days is, please make sure your kids are engaged in those days that, you know, where they're virtual when they need to be on A and B, that they're, they're engaged in those days. Just, uh, so that, you know, it, it makes, it's easy to kinda fall off, but you know, those days are important and, you know, especially where you're, it doesn't matter if you're a senior and you're gonna need those skills if you go to whatever education level you're gonna go to next or you're middle school, whatever. You need those foundation skills for going forward, so. It's easy to slip away, but please stay engaged, parents, community members, you know, you know kids. Make sure they're keeping up, so.
Thank you. India?
I will also agree with my other board members, Astor and Lyle. We are definitely looking a lot very well in the, and compared to a lot of other districts. And I would challenge, um, those who are watching and just paying attention to us. Uh, take a look at other districts. Um, there are, those are, they're struggling in a lot of ways. So, um, kudos to our board members, to our district leaders, to our superintendent. Um, it's a lot of work, a lot of patience, and I appreciate everyone's work in doing it. I will also say it again, um, conferences are coming up, parent conferences. So, please take the time, um, parents, to, uh, sign up, um, check. so please take the time, um, parents, to, uh, sign up, um, check in on your student, ask your questions. Um, if you need to vent, do that. I mean, this is really a good time to, you know, we've been in school for most three to four weeks, um, for some of us. Um, so, you know, we need the feedback, uh, we need the questions, we need all of that. So, you know, take the time to meet with the teachers and talk to them and sign up for virtual or be in-person, so, yeah, that's it.
Thank you, India. And I would echo what, um, all of my fellow board members have said, that I really appreciate our staff and the diligence they've done. The number of contact tracers that we have within the district, I think we've stayed on the proactive side of this. And, um, I'm very proud of this district and, and how we have survived, um, so far. And I just, um, I just know that with the pre-planning, it's, it's done wonders for, um, our students, so. Um, just a couple of things, I'd like to say that our board is going to be getting together in two nights, and we're gonna have a little PD, we're going to have, um, some board, better boardsmanship and, um, learn some more skills, so the board members have that this Wednesday, the thirtieth. Then we'll have, um, the board meeting on October first, um, to approve the bond, um, issue that we just, um, spoke of a bit ago. And then lastly, I just wanted to, um, mention that the Waterloo Schools Foundation is still having their, um, annual fundraiser and highlighting of the district. It'll look a little bit different. Um, it's gonna be virtual on Facebook Live and YouTube, and it's called Breakfast for Dinner, and it's at seven o'clock. And, um, the foundation does a lot for our district. They fill in a lot of voids and they, um, give our teachers a lot of grants, and, um, they just do an awesome job. So if you have the opportunity to, that is October sixth at seven PM, and it's the Breakfast for Dinner Foundation. So, that, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
And second, and thank you, we are adjourned at seven eleven. Thank you.
Thank you.